Recording is running.
Ready? Is it recording?
It's recording.
This is a meeting of the Hampton. This is the meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. January 11th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Being conducted fully remotely in accordance with directives issued by Governor Baker. It is an emergency declaration of March 2020. I'm going to take the roll call. Robert Markle.
Here, present.
Selectman Flynn.
Here.
Selectman Glover.
Here.
Selectman Davenport here. Pam Courtney.
I've admitted her.
Okay.
She's attempting to. Here she is.
Okay, Pam. And let our guests identify themselves.
I'm Libby Corbo. I'm with the Collins Center.
Okay. All right. So first, I'm going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic to which it stands.
One nation. One nation under God. Is invincible with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording? Thank you. Was anyone recording the meeting other than us? Please indicate by raising their hand or unmuting and saying so. Seeing none. The first item on the agenda. Do we have any minutes? No? Okay. First item on the agenda is the is the Collins. Classification and compensation study. Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen and members of the public who are joining us. My name's Libby Corbo and I'm with the Collins Center at UMass Boston. We're performing a compensation and classification study as well as updating job descriptions for the town. And this is a process that's been ongoing for a little bit now. We just received, and Mary Arcarti will be joining us shortly. I think she, the information we had was not 6:10, but I can update both portions of the task at hand, including the job descriptions and the salary compensation study if necessary. But I will start with the job descriptions because that's what I'm working on personally. We received our last information relative to the job descriptions from employees on December 3rd. And that process usually takes once the final information is in about two months. So we should be finishing up job descriptions the end of this month into early February. And then the process is that those job descriptions will return to the employees. They'll have about a week to turn them around. And again, I would encourage that deadline to be followed. So this process can eventually wrap up. They'll have about a week to review, review with their supervisor, make any edits. We'll work together to get them into a final form. And what the town will have is standardized job descriptions for each position that's included in this study, which is, is, you know, excellent in terms of your management because not only does it tailor the job descriptions to the positions, but it also standardized the format, supervision, supervision exercise, qualifications. All of that is in the standard form. And those will be provided to the town at the conclusion of the job description review process. Like I said, end of January, early February now. And then the compensation and classification study is ongoing as well. And what that does is it takes the job information that we've received from employees and compares that to your comparable communities to get an average and a median salary. And that information will tell you where you stand as a community with offering competitive wages for your employees that are included in this study as well. So right now, I believe Mary can talk to it more when she jumps in. But I believe we've got nine out of 11 communities responding, which is excellent, considering some of this information was gathered over the holiday period. Over the holidays, sometimes it is a challenge to get communities to respond. So we were very pleased to be able to get that information from nine out of the 11. And then we just have to follow up with the other two communities to see if they'd be willing to provide us with that information. In addition, Bob is providing us with some updated salary information so we can be sure that we're comparing apples to apples when it comes to the positions in the other communities and the positions that we have now. Because sometimes with stipends and whatnot, compensation changes. So we want to make sure that we have the most recent available information that we're providing as part of this study.
The town clerk came in a little while ago, maybe a week ago, and gave me, asked about the assistant collector and the assistant town clerk. And just to clarify, you had not received.
So some positions did not. You're right. Some positions did not submit a response to our questionnaire. And that's fine. We will do the best we have. We've done many of these positions. So what we do with someone who has chosen not to submit a response to the questionnaire that we put out, we go ahead and we give them a sample job description. And luckily for positions like assistant treasure collector, those tend to be pretty standard positions because a lot of the job duties are prescribed by statute. So positions like that are easier to do a sample job description than you would have maybe an administrative assistant who might be doing a little bit of everything. So what we can do is provide a sample in response to that. And there are a few positions that we will have to do that for. It's not a problem. It just might take a little more finessing in that week period time where they're reviewing the job description that we are submitting for them. And they're taking a chance to look that over and make sure it accurately describes what they are doing.
Okay. And I did ask Libby and Mary if they would give us data on health agents. Did send, I actually conveyed that to the board late this afternoon. I'm not sure if they've had a chance to look at it. Looks like the data shows a wide range of compensation for health agents in this region.
And we do try to break that down to make it comparable on an hourly rate as well so that you can kind of see, again, apples to apples. Because some towns have 33.5 hours a week. That's their standard. Other towns are 35 hours a week. Some are paying by stipend. So especially with the health agent position, it can be very difficult to come to an accurate salary. So the more information you have for that position, especially in other types of inspector positions as well, that, the better for that.
I guess, I guess my concern is that we started this process back in the summer. And now we're running up against the town meeting again. And I don't understand the delay.
Well, I'll try, Libby, if you don't mind me jumping in on this because you're way too nice.
I didn't even see you in there, Mary.
I did. I snuck in. I snuck in. I snuck in at 6:05. So the reality is, we did not start till the fall. We had initial delays. If you recall, the select board meeting a few months ago, when we indicated we had not gotten the response we wanted on the questionnaires. And there was a real push to get people to fill out the questionnaires. So the truth of the matter is, we had some delays. But we know that we will have a recommendation to you in the month of February. The reality is, we have received nine of the 11 survey communities' data. So we are in great shape there. We have to get, there's four municipalities that we have to fine tune. They gave us their annual stipends versus their hourly rate. We prefer to compare hourly rates so that we've got apples to apples. But we know by the end of January, we will get that done. So we anticipate giving the town a draft in, in February. We had a very slow start. If you recall, I think, I don't remember the date of the meeting. It was either August or September. The board was very strident and kind of compelling people to fill out their questionnaires as we left the meeting. That didn't work as well as we thought it would. And it wasn't until November. And even two weeks ago, we had inquiries of why didn't you interview some staff? It's because we did not receive their questionnaires. So because you have diffuse authority, administrative authority across departments, we did not get the response we would have liked. So where we are now is that Libby is working on finalizing the draft job descriptions, which will be delivered in January. So I, you know, we can't go backwards. We can only go forwards. So I think that we're going to have that all done in February. The survey is all but done. We're fine tuning some of the survey data because some municipalities have given us stipend, annual stipends or annual salaries that we need to compare to the hourly rates. But we're, we're in great shape in terms of that. So we feel full confident that in February, you will have a sense of where you are. And I think we're, I think we're in great shape. I mean, with all due respect to my lovely coworker, Libby, she's too nice. I'm a little more harsh. So I think that we're in great shape. In terms of the health agent, I know you're looking at that position. What's funky about, and funky is a technical HR term. What's funky about that is, like yourselves, you have a base stipend and then you pay per inspection. You know, other towns have a base salary. Other towns have, so we've got to do a little work on that and we can help you with that. And we're happy to do that. As with, I understand you're looking at a public health nurse and we can get you some salary data on that. But we feel confident that, you know, in February, you'll have the results. It doesn't, it does us no good to say, oh, employees didn't get back to us. We didn't get the questionnaires. The reality is, in January of 2021, we're in great shape. And we feel that you're going to be done with this project in February, which should put you in good stead moving forward with, with your budget. There's only two municipalities that we've had trouble with. And one is so small that we're not sure it's worth it. The other one is, we've reached out already directly with the town administrator in that town to get that data. And that's a true comparable. So I think we're in great shape. So when we meet a month from now, I think we'll be giving you a draft report on the whole project.
And just if I can tack on to a little bit of what Mary said. Again, and I'm, I'm not making excuses for anyone, but there was COVID. It really disrupted your workplace and we understand that. We do try to be flexible with employees. Again, with everything that they had to do with COVID and working remotely, I'm sure that this, you know, returning a questionnaire may not have been high on the priority list. But we really, you know, in, even before December, it was supposed to be done, final. You know, that was it. We weren't going to take any more information. But we did have some more come in, did take that information. Because at the end of the day, it really gives a better picture to have the most information possible. So even, I think it was December 3rd, I took additional information for job descriptions from employees who wanted to participate. And we're just now finding the time. So we are, we're doing our best to include everyone and get everyone represented. We want everyone to be a part of this project who wants to be. And for those who are unable to return, we do feel like we do have to cut it off right, you know, now. We just can't take any more information. We're going to go ahead and process those job descriptions and get them out to the town and the employees. And they can review sample ones if they haven't returned their questionnaire yet.
So Libby, you bring up a good point. Even for those who maybe didn't fill out a questionnaire in time and we send them a draft, they still have the opportunity, they and their supervisors still have the opportunity to mark up and edit the drafts we've come up with. So I mean, there's many bites of the apple here. Because of the diffuse authority and management, we've had some employees slash departments not respond in terms of the deadlines that were set. However, the end of January, we're going to send those draft job descriptions out. And everybody has equal opportunity to comment on, edit and submit comments. So we still feel that February is, is a great deadline. We've already got the salary data collected. So I think you'll be in good shape to do recommendations for your budget process going forward.
Okay. Just another note here. Our health agent is retiring in August. The town administrators for the three communities that now share the health agent are having their first meeting tomorrow over Zoom to discuss a collaborative relationship for hiring a replacement person. They've also added in the administrator in Long Meadow, which is not part of the group right now. We'll have more information for the select.
I think that, I think that's really a smart move, Mr. Markle. I think that, you know, I forwarded to you some of the salary data that we collected on the health agent. I'm not quite sure that that's directly relational because the way you handle a health agent is different than another town. So I'd be curious after your meeting tomorrow to kind of regroup on how they want to look forward to it. Because if our relationship with the health agent, that is a basic stipend and then a per inspection, like you do with a building inspector, that's different than having a salary. I would like to see, perhaps after your meeting tomorrow, we touch base next week or later this week on, you know, what are the other municipalities engaged in that conversation saying about what should we pay? Any joint effort to provide those services, you will be well served. Trying to do it on a piecemeal basis, you're going to have, you know, a much broader opportunity to address the health, public health issues that you need to. I happen to live in Shrewsbury and our public health services are provided by the city of Worcester. So we pay a fee. And Worcester provides our health inspection, our public health approach to everything. So for us in Shrewsbury as a town meeting member, that's a great relationship. So I think, Mr. Markle, the conversations post tomorrow will be really fruitful. We can help you get some of the data on what are the other municipalities doing. But I think once you have an understanding with those municipalities of what model they're looking for, whether it's a one-host community versus the supplemental municipalities, I think that will be more informative moving forward of the best way to handle that.
We're going to discuss a standard method of compensation as really the top.
Right.
The top issue. Okay.
You said, you said a couple of times about a, let's see, diffuse authority and management structure. Is that a symptom of having?
Feeling you read into my message of, it's not clear whose people's bosses are. Um, because I was on a meeting back, I believe it was in August or September, when this board said, this is unacceptable. People have not filled out their questionnaires.
Right.
We just got a few back at Thanksgiving time. So I mean, either people do not respect the authority or they don't perceive the authority or don't have time for the authority. It's not for the Collins Center to comment on that. But the reality is, and Libby is way too, the reality is, we did not receive the questionnaires filled out by the employees in a timely manner, which is the cause of the delay. Having said that, we have easily regrouped and we are doing draft job descriptions. There are a few positions that we never got the questionnaires on. So what we've decided to do, rather than wait for them, is to come up with a draft job description that we know from best practice from other municipalities. We know what certain of these positions do. So we're going to issue those job descriptions by the end of this month and ask people who did not have, have or make the time to fill out a questionnaire to instead of doing a questionnaire, edit a draft job description. So Libby was being nice and I'm being a little bit less nice, saying you had your opportunity. Now we're going to do a draft and we're asking you to edit it.
Thank you. And does any of the board members have any questions?
Well, I, I had asked for an analysis of our staffing organization to have, so that we would have the highest efficiency and wondered if you were going to be able to do that? And if you plan to do that.
Do you mean, and we do offer HR audits, but that would be outside the scope, I believe, of what we're currently, the current contract is.
I'd ask, I'd ask Mary, I think, to comment on the structure that we have in the office. So.
Well.
And we had already talked about the suggestion you're going to make for.
Yeah. So certainly, Mr. Markle, thank you. Certainly within the, the select board's office, we're going to opine on the way that you've got some diverse, diffuse work. You've got an employee who's in the Board of Health, who's in the fire department, who does work for the Board of Selectmen or Select Board, I forgive me. And then you have the administrative staff. But beyond your main office of who does what work, and we do have some recommendations on that. If this is not an organizational structure in terms of who does what, but what be, what has become clear? And we do have a recommendation, and I'll share our secret tonight on, you know, public TV, is that, that that position, the Board of Health, the kind of operations person, the fire person, you've got one staff member who has a lot of tentacles in different departments. We are recommending, and you will see it in our report, that that officially be put under the Board of Selectmen's Office, or the Select Board's Office. But other than that, we're not commenting on what your structure is and how many hours people should work or anything like that. That's an in-depth organizational study. But it became very clear in our interviews with people and the questionnaires that were filled out that even within the select board's function, there's a little bit of lack of clarity, let's say. And we do recommend that that position be folded under the select board. Whether the funding is parsed, you know, like when you have a water sewer enterprise, you have a certain percentage for water, you have a certain percentage for sewer. We could certainly see that a certain percentage would be for fire or health. But the position should be seated within the select board office. So other than that, we have not looked at your organizational structure and staffing structure. But that position and those functions jumped out at us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Basically, that's the same area. I disagree with that because I think your analysis is slightly off there. You have a person performing two separate jobs. And if that, one of those jobs went away from that person, that job would still be under that department, i.e. the fire department. Just like Parks has a clerk that works for them. But if you have this person that also serves as a Parks clerk, would that therefore fold under select? Just because the same person worked both jobs? I think going back to your original point is, let's look at the structure of each job per se. And you bring up another good point. Because these are boards and the people you're looking for answers from, answer to their board chairperson, that may have made some difficulty there in getting it back. And I think something that Bob has been working on by having his staff meetings is a better way to get the message out to the different departments. As you know, working with other towns, when you have many volunteer boards, it's tough to get a regular dissemination of policy or information.
You know what? Mr. Flynn, you're absolutely right. And that's very true in the function of the discreet fire functions on that job. Those could be held by a separate person. You know, if you carved that out, let's say, and, and that's the blessing and the curse of a small town. You know, you have people wearing many hats. So if you carved out that fire function, that would be discreet. The other functions of sort of the, you know, who maintains the photocopiers for town hall? Who, you know, there's some other operational administrative functions in that Board of Health function. It's almost like there's three functions with that one position. And, you know, you all have to make a decision of what makes the most sense. We, I do not disagree with you at all. That particular function has four hours assigned to the fire department. Those are discreet. Those are, those are discreet fire department functions. But where Board of Selectmen or Select Board, I forget which one you are, I apologize, is also Board of Health, the lines get muddy. If you, you could totally buy for that fire department four hours and have that be a clerk to the fire department. But the reality is, the person who sits in that position has almost three functions. And we need to come up with a way to deal with that. And we can have, you can have a special municipal employee who holds two jobs at two different rates of pay. That's perfectly acceptable. You can do that. But again, the beauty and the curse of small towns, that you have to be flexible and adaptable. So what our goal is to help you reach that goal, however that looks. It's easy to pull out, it's easy to pull out the fire hours of that position. It's less easy to pull out those functions as the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. So we can, we can discuss that and we can carve out what are the average hours based on all of that. And that's a minute issue in the larger scope of the project. You know, I mean, we can, we hit those fringes. We can say 10 hours for this, 10 hours for that, and we can make that work. And you can allocate those pay hours to that. But the, again, the beauty is that you have incredibly dedicated, almost foolish employees who love what they do, put in great money that they earn, you know, doing the work that you need to do for the municipality. And our goal is to help you identify what makes the most sense. What is the value of those jobs? The tricky part is, if you have somebody working at the administrative level of a Board of Health, which is highly complex, and then you have somebody who's doing a few hours a week that may not be as complex, how do you handle the pay rate for those? And part of our survey and what our report, our draft report will show you is how do we figure that out and what do we recommend? We typically recommend that you don't have different pay for individual employees. That just gets messy because what happens is, they're sitting at one desk. I'm the administrative assistant to the Board of Health and I make, for the sake of argument, $20 an hour. And I get a call for my fire job and that's at $15 an hour. Do I have to stop and track my time for the fire department for that 15 minutes? We like to try to look at it as, how do we equalize that? We're not there yet because we don't have all the salary data. But you bring up an excellent point that not all functions are the same. And we need to grapple with how do we define those ratios?
Thank you, Mary.
Certainly, I will say that Hampton, if I can jump in, is certainly lucky to have employees who are wanting to help out. And we'll, and you'll see that their jobs have evolved because they've taken a little bit here. They've seen a need. They've jumped in. They've taken on additional duties. And so part of the classification and compensation study is really to look at the position as it is, not as it was maybe when that employee was hired. But you have a number of employees who've said, you know what? I'll take that on and have really jumped in to try to help out by taking on some additional job duties. And have really jumped in to try to help out by taking on some additional job duties that might have otherwise been outside the scope of the one position they were hired in. So part of our job is to look at that and say, well, how do we make sure they're getting recognition for these job duties? And what can we do to craft a position that accurately encompasses what they're actually doing? Not necessarily what they were hired 10 years ago to do.
I would say I agree with that. I don't know if I would characterize them as foolish, and I thought I said a word out there. Dedicated and committed.
Dedicated, just like you.
But again, thank you for your efforts. We look forward to your report.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, ladies. We look forward to your report.
All right, we're going to regroup in February and we'll be done with this.
And I know we'll have that one week timeframe on that job description review.
Patience is not, patience is not one of my virtues.
All right. Bye, friends.
Robert?
Uh, yes, dispatch services update. Is that where we are?
Yes, yeah.
Did have the first impact bargaining session. Uh, I won't discuss the terms in public, but I did convey them to the board. But the requests are from our dispatchers. We've scheduled a second meeting for the 19th. And at some point, I will ask the board to consider what, you know, th- those requests, I didn't hear any opposition to them. Uh, so that we can make, we can make a commitment. There's also another matter that we we haven't discussed yet, but these sessions really are the equivalent of collective bargaining sessions. So we really can't do this in public. But I think we did make some progress. And I think there's a chance at least that we can complete this process smoothly.
And so how will we, how will, how will we, we need to complete the IMA, we have to approve that and vote on that. And and then how will we do the logistics of, how do we, is there, is, does the state 911 provide some kind of consultant or something to do the actual transfer?
The state 911 office is not being staffed. I've called twice, have not been able to connect with Mr. Pozniak. We did receive from Town Council a review of the IMA. There were a few rather technical changes, nothing substantive. And I got that this afternoon. I did send that over to the Town Administrator in Wilbraham. Both proposed changes as well as clean copy. The next step is for the Wilbraham Board to take action on the IMA. I don't know when they're going to do that. They also were having Town Council review the IMA proposal. Could happen tonight. But uh, that's where we are. I think that the important step at this point is to get an IMA, IMA signed by both towns. That will then open up, open the door for the state office to step in and provide funding well over $100,000 to extend fiber optic line. And I don't know how long that's going to take. I've been asking, I don't have any answers yet. I see Mr. Gentile is on this, is in this meeting, maybe he has, maybe he has a response to that. But I clearly, I think before the merger can take place, we have to have a functioning fiber optics.
All right. Any comments or questions?
I've asked Tony to unmute and comment if he can.
Okay, sorry about that. I had an issue with my laptop. Um, I actually, believe it or not, I do have a meeting with the State 911 Regional PSAB Director tomorrow at 11:00. Um, I can ask her to contact Mr. Markle. Or if you have any questions for me to ask her, I can do that as well.
Well, I in the commitments that the State 911 Office has made for three years of the fee. As well as the fourth and fifth year, as well as the commitment to cover the cost of the fiber optic line. What I have been told is that Hampden will not see any of these monies. That the fee for service for the first three years will be 100%. That'll go directly to the Town of Wilbraham. And the cost of extending the fiber optic line will also go directly to the Town of Wilbraham. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's my understanding. I know with the fee, the assessment, we have to quote unquote bill you and show that we sent you a bill. And then we send it to State 911 and then they'll reimbursement or send us the the assessment. Instead of having it, having Hampden be repaid or just come right to Wilbraham.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Well, just, just on a minor, on a minor note, I I look at the IMA. And there were two, um, two issues for wording that I had a problem with. On page two, it says we will substantially have the same service. And I thought that that was a a tenuous word. And on page three, it says they will make reasonable efforts for uniformity in procedures. I thought reasonable was another word that in in my experience with contracts, those are two open to interpretation words, I guess I would say. So I would just bring those to your attention.
All right.
If you send me what you've just said in an email, I'll convey that over to Wilbraham and see if we can have a language that will be satisfactory.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Gaming Commission Funds.
I did send you some pictures, some photos of crosswalks. Uh, because although no decision has been made, it looks like the board is considering sidewalk, a crosswalk on Summers Road. And so let me bring that up. Here's what we were looking at. I think those are two not only attractive crosswalks, but also they stand out up to motorists. It's hard to see in that busy section of Summers Road where cars are traveling 40 miles per hour and faster. How we can do this and have it safe without having some kind of blinker light there.
I think we talked about before, we had to have a blinker light tech system. I think all of us have experience with the Connecticut traffic. I hope there's no people from Connecticut on here, but they're the worst offenders zooming down through there. And if we don't have some type of visual warning system. I don't care how nice that crosswalk looks, nobody's going to see it coming 40 miles an hour from Connecticut. So, I mean, the, having the light system is going to be critical there.
Do we have any idea how far? Excuse me, did I interrupt somebody? Do, do we have any idea how far the, or the $100,000 will go, what it will purchase? I mean, does the light system with the sidewalk, is that within the $100,000 range? Or there have been suggestions that we include a sidewalk from that point down to the mini mall or to the street to Summers, to East Long Meadow Road there. Um, that's been suggested. So there have been other suggestions relative to this. I'm wondering how far the $100,000 goes, if anybody knows that.
I can provide that information. If that is the consensus of the board. Uh, I can provide that information. I do know that traffic lights, even blinker lights are expensive.
I check, I I was talking to a, to a person that was involved with the East Long Meadow Light, which isn't really a traffic light. It's more like a, an alert light, I guess I would say, because it doesn't have, you know, red, yellow and green and, and whatever. Um, he said it wasn't that expensive, but I don't know what that expensive means. So we'd have, we'd have to have more firm data, I think.
Good.
Yeah. Several of the selectmen, I thought earlier this week, and I did some research. Those, those blinking traffic lights, according to the government information, go between 10 to 15,000 dollars. Also pictures similar to Bob's crosswalk that I sent. There's tons of designs. If you just go on the internet and Google, I mean, there was one that had like elevated blocks. It was just like a 3D image. And if anybody missed that, they'd have to be drunk.
I like the piano.
The piano.
Piano keys.
Yeah. The basic crosswalk is is approximately 10 to 15,000 for each street you want to cross.
The ones that I showed are going to be more expensive. The problem, I think, with, let's say, the piano, which I think was attractive, it's got to be repainted regularly. And in New England, where we put sand on the road, paint doesn't last long. Uh, the ones that I showed pictures of, I think are a little more sturdy. Uh, you're going to have to paint the, uh, the lines that outline the crosswalks every year. But they will stand out to motorists and, and I think will not require the kind of maintenance uh, the painted crosswalks will will require.
I think Becky had a comment.
15 was basically for the lights and cutting the curb and that. So the crosswalk, the painting is is above that. So if you do, if you do four of them, you've pretty much ate up the 100 grand.
I just had a quick comment. So a few years ago, I had done some research on this because we were concerned about that area at Centennial Commons. So I do have from the Town of East Long Meadow the figures that they used when they purchased the light systems for the East Long Meadow Rail Trail, which is where those blinking lights are. So I can forward that over to you. So you have that. Um, one thing that East Long Meadow did say to me was that a lot of their cost was kept down because they have, um, within their DPW, they have um, employees who were able to do, uh, like the electrical work and everything like that. So, um, the costs that that I have are are definitely lower because they had, um, the manpower within town. But I'll send over their quotes so you can have a look at them.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll continue pursuing that. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Police Chief Search Plan and Timeline. What's the outline there, Bob?
I'm just writing a note here. I will advertise by the first of the week. One decision that the selectmen may want to consider is whether or not to have an assessment center. Or also the structure for, actually the structure for reviewing applications is what we have to think up next. It can be maybe a selectman and myself going through applications. And winnowing, winnowing the number down to three, four. And then having interviews with the Board of Selectmen for the finalists. Uh, maybe two interviews. But at least one interview with with the finalists. And maybe a second interview if you get it down to two or something like that. That's one approach to it. The other approach would be, uh, I know that some communities set up three different committees to review, with the selectmen on each committee. To review the candidates who apply. Barry Del Castillo did that when they were choosing a police chief uh, in one of the local towns. It might have been Long Meadow. And the third option would be contract with an, with a professional consultant to do an assessment center. Assessment centers really grew out of the civil service system and we don't have a civil service chief. But it was a, a, an alternate method if you had a civil service chief that was sanctioned by the state. Since it has worked reasonably well. Towns that do not have civil service chiefs have used this approach. Problem, of course, is that it's going to cost some money in the range of 5 to 7,000 dollars. But those are your choices.
Any comment from the board?
You don't have to decide tonight. I'm going to do the ad.
Yeah.
And and then as, as the applications come in. Then we can make a decision on process for reviewing applications.
And you're going to give two, two weeks or three weeks for the, for the?
Yeah, I think, I think, as I said, uh, in the packet, I'm looking at getting the ad out tomorrow, maybe, or or Wednesday and allowing three weeks. That would be roughly February 2nd. Any professionals in the field will check the Mass Municipal Association website and the Mass Chiefs website. I've talked with the Chief Farnsworth. He's going to get an ad, get the ad placed on the Mass Chiefs website. And there's also a Western Mass Chiefs Association where we will get the advertisement out.
Bob, do we have a job description? I don't know. We talked about that before, like education requirements, residency, if that's required. Or as we do with the patrol officers, be within a certain distance slash time from town.
There is a job description. We'll have to dig that out. I'll send it to you. I'm sure we may have to do some updating. Uh, and one of the questions I think would be whether or not you're going to require residency or whether you'll go by the, either be the state regulation, which I believe is 15 miles from.
I think that's what we require for the officers right now.
Right, yeah. See, we have the Chief in in this session. Maybe he can give us. How does that work, Chief?
No, I understand the facts. I've heard have been correct. 15 miles closest border to border is the state regulation. I believe for a promotion or such as this, you can set a a different parameter that you, prior to offering someone employment.
If we're going to require residency, I know what's going to happen. Your candidate is going to say, pay me enough to live in Hampden and I'll, I'll gladly move.
Uh, some municipalities have had trouble enforcing those too.
Yeah, that's usually the way it works out, so.
Just going to say that if we were looking at promotions within, they might be grandfathered if they had a residency issue. Because if it's been okay in the past, it might be okay if somebody was a patrol officer or sergeant at a certain distance and that had been okay. That might be grandfathered to Chief, but that's a decision.
We're going to have several candidates internally and certainly nothing that I say tonight should indicate that they're in any kind of disadvantage. In fact, if anything, they probably have an advantage.
Well, on the interview, on the interview committees that I've been on, they always gave, given in-house candidates interviews. All, all the in-house candidates have gotten interviews. So that minimizes the number of, you know, it depends on how many outside people you get. I would prefer to have us conduct the search ourselves with your help, obviously. Um, and have the Long Meadow Chief, maybe the review of the, of the applications be you, a selectman in the, in the, um, and the Long Meadow Chief would be a nice threesome, but whatever, we can discuss that as, as Johnson, when we get the application, know how many there are and go forward.
I mean, normally the case is you're going to have to disqualify probably half or even more than half of the applications for one reason or another. But that winnowing will need to take place before we get into the other review.
All right. Anything else on that topic? Uh, selectmen's goals.
I tried to put together a composite of the goals that the three selectmen submitted. Uh, in your packet, I've tried to blend them. So. Comments?
Well, I'll, I'll start the comments, I guess, by, by, by noting that, um. I am most comfortable when there's a minimum number of goals, one or two. Maybe at the outset, three, but I don't think you can maintain your focus and really give a lot of effort to the attainment of a goal if you have a large number of them. So that's one of the things. And many times you can take the ideas in several of them and put them together into one kind of a goal so that. You know, that it encompasses all of the things. So that would be one of my suggestions.
All right. You're saying it needs further work. Further consolidation.
Well, it seems, what the board like, it's whatever the board wants to do.
I, I, I think that, you know, the effort to establish goals is good, but what tends to happen is that, uh. You're working on tasks that are assigned and other things happen, events intervene. For example, your police chief resigns. Uh, for example, uh, whether you like it or not, you've got to do contract negotiations because they're going to expire. Or a pandemic happens. And so you get derailed quite a bit from, from working on the goals. I would agree with Mary Ellen that, uh. Having a, a, a more narrow set would, would be helpful because you have to assume that time will be taken from. Work on those goals by things that happen, by events.
And also.
Like, go ahead.
If you make the first statement global, then, um, that a lot of things can fit under it. You know, if the police chief vacancy occurs. And your goal is to, to control the property tax rate back, you can say, okay, well, when we had the police chief, we looked at the salary or whatever, you know, I mean. It seems to me that the, the first statement has to be broad, but have areas for, for specific activities, I guess is what I would say. But John, go. All right, anybody go.
I think an idea would be kind of merge the two things. If you had more goals, let's set up a procedure to review them. I see, I think one problem might be is you set these goals and you don't look at them again till next year. Hey, did we accomplish them? But I think Bob, if you make a point that every quarter, we're going to go back and look at the goals, see what we did accomplish. Is there a new goal, just like you said, because things happen that needs to be added to the list? And hopefully, by the grace of God, you crossed a couple off even better. So I think that should be a goal is to. A quarterly basis and keep them fresh and keep them in our mind.
Well, for example, I could, I put in number five, I can take, you, you could take that right out if you wanted to, as far as I'm concerned. Um, um, you could include the word transparency and the COVID one, the COVID one under. You know, under. Under number one, just reword number one a little bit, and that can be included in there. So that you could then, you could then say, well, we continued with Zoom. So that was evidence of, you know. Overall efficiency or communicating with the public or transparency or, you know, that kind of a deal. So I think, I think this, the, the first statement is of, of most importance and, um, and I agree with what, what Bob said, that other things come in and. And, um, infringe on your goals many times.
Uh, number three can be decided, uh, without a lot of.
Yeah.
Discussion and pondering. Clearly, uh, a number of people have taken advantage of Zoom video conferencing. And when we do get control of COVID, uh, my guess is that you're going to see. Some citizens at least saying, why don't you just continue this? Some of us can come to the meetings in person as we've always done. Uh, but some of us can't and we'd like to be able to have the Zoom, uh, option as well as the recording. That we can watch the next day or the next week. So. And your choice will be continue with some form of Zoom or to put, uh, the meetings on the cable, which many communities do. There is an additional cost of, to that, and that cost is assessed to the, uh, subscribers to cable. Zoom is free mostly.
Right.
So if Bob maybe could look at these again in a structured basis and come up with a timetable, hey. The first of June, the first of September, we're going to look at them again.
Yeah.
Or as needed, that might be an idea.
No, I like that. I like that, you know, the mail down dates for when things could be, should be accomplished, you know?
Well, I would, I would be happy to, to work with Mr. Markle to, to, to try to call these into a, a better statement and so we can bring it to some finality at our next meeting. If that's agreeable with everybody.
That's agreeable. I'm, I'm okay with that. And, yeah, you know, so Mary Ellen and Bob are going to work on calling these down.
Yeah.
I'm by me.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the schedule, set up the schedule for the department, uh, budget meetings. Big, big dates.
The, uh, budgets are, are coming in. We got, we got a bunch this afternoon. So. Still missing some of it.
So, so you'll just put them, you'll just put them on?
Okay.
Throw them on, you know, to meetings.
I would say, uh, we would do one big department per meeting and then, uh, a couple of smaller ones if, if. It won't take much time. So first, uh, budget submitted, not surprisingly, is the highway department.
Right.
He is always very prompt.
Always prompt.
Uh, and I'll schedule that for next week.
All right. Uh, next item is the li- library kiosk suggestion. So I put this on, basically, uh. Doug, Doug Boyer contacted me and, and said, uh, he was just, he thought that we could do a little bit better for the library. And have their, uh, their curbside pickup out there on the bench in milk crates with, uh, plastic covering them up. Cause he thinks, and I agree with that, this is probably something that the community will, will continue doing even after COVID. Uh, so I thought maybe the cares fund could build like a bus kiosk or small thing where the books could be, the books and materials could be, uh. Safely kept for curbside pickup. Have you spoken to the library about it?
I, well, I have not, although there was a message from the, uh, head librarian. Through the effect that she doesn't think it's needed.
Well. Well, I, I, I understand her, her wanting to. I think, I think, I think, I, I think it would, but it'd be a good addition out there. Uh, you know, they, they've done it for quite a while now at the COVID. It's been successful. I think if we can spend, get a couple of thousand dollars from cares funds to do that, it might be something that'll. Should service a good stead for the future as well, not just for the library. I don't know, board members, what do you think?
Okay, just bring back the old books CPA money will pay for it.
Yeah. Pam? Pam's got her hand raised.
I, well, I had my hand raised actually about the scheduling of the departments because I had already done that on our tentative, uh, calendar, but, yeah. Yeah. So I mean, whatever for the, for the kiosk, I think it's a great idea.
I will have a discussion.
Yes.
Our librarian and, um. Get back to you next week and then.
Well, I, I, I also think it's, it's a nice idea and I think that it would, it professionalizes the area a little more, gives a, gives a better image. Um, I would think that we would involve the library in designing whatever we're going to do, whether it's going to be a bus thing or whatever. And try, and if we can do it with COVID funds so that it, or, um, the ones that John just mentioned, um, it doesn't, it doesn't cost us, you know. An excessive amount that I think it would, it would be, it, it would beautify that area a bit. So I.
I'd like to hit the library on board. I don't want to force something on them.
Right, exactly.
Whoever, I know they have a meeting coming up and I can't remember, who's the liaison for the library? Okay. If, okay, if you go to this meeting, perhaps you could get their feel for it.
Will do.
All right.
All right. Selectmen's reports.
Oh, I'll start. Again, um, report is that, I know Bob was going to touch on it. Uh, the COA board had an opening and I know we, we, it was out for a meeting in December, Bob. And I think it didn't make it onto the agenda. They had an opening for an under sixty position that none of our current, the three of us wanted to take. So they advertised for it. They had, uh, someone come in Tina Duran. And the board unanimously voted to recommend her, uh, acceptance onto the COA board as an under sixty member.
That's in my report. Becky, Becky, I've joined the.
And Becky's here, she can speak.
Comments?
There she is.
Um, Tina, Tina had hoped to be at the meeting today, but she had a family emergency that she had to tend to. Um, but she has been involved in town. Uh, she's lived in town for a number of years and she is very involved with Saint Mary's Church and, um. She has done numerous volunteer projects for the senior center, um, with her church group. Um, so she's familiar to us. She does take care of her ninety-eight-year-old mother at home. So she also has, uh, firsthand. Knowledge on caregiving for older adults and, uh, she's just very interested in getting more involved with the senior center. And so the board, um, interviewed her at the last meeting and thought she would be a great.
Right.
You know, in terms of the current, she's filling a spot Becky or is it, uh?
This is just a vacancy that we've had.
Okay.
I was going to recommend her appointment in my report, so. You, you can, you can vote on that as, as a recommendation.
Okay.
So in my role as liaison at the council on aging, I'd like to bring forth to the board the appointment of Tina Duran to a position, a under sixty position on the COA board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, Bob, would you mind working out the, the, not to make it big, but the term with Becky, so it's coincides with the current board structure? You know, whether it's one year, two year, because you know what your current board makeup is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, town administrators report.
Okay, uh, capital planning committee continues to meet every two weeks. Our next report will be on the nineteenth. We had a discussion, a long discussion, uh, on the fifth, uh, involving the current town hall. Without conclusions, of course. Obviously that's a dilemma for the board of selectmen in the town. Uh, the focus on the nineteenth is going to be the fire department. I've sent out the, uh, Mitchell associates study. Actually, it's on, it's on the website. I couldn't send it out because it's too large a file. We're going to focus on that and I've asked the capital planning committee to assist. In engaging the public as to what they would like to see for the future of the fire department. Obviously, the kind of fire department that the town has in five or 10 years. Will have implications for the building itself and the expansion project. Obviously, if you have a full-time department, you'll need, uh, sleeping quarters. If you don't, then you don't need to build that into your expansion. So as the board pointed out back in the fall. Uh, you can't really make this, good decisions about the building and the expansion of the building without knowing. What kind of fire department you're going to have configured in a few years. So I've asked them to sort of assist. With the board of selectmen, myself, and trying to come up with, uh, a program to engage the public in, in this decision. So. And then I think the committee can then focus on recommending to the board of selectmen a particular. Option that's in that Mitchell report. Okay, uh, you know that I've had the impact bargaining session and all of it's coming up on the nineteenth. We meet with the, uh, head of the, the dispatcher union. Uh, the, uh, representative of the union, uh, in the region from downtown Springfield. And, uh, their attorney and we have attorney Weinberg providing assistance to the town. We do have, now have, uh, a standard form for capital requests. And also a, uh, a sheet, uh, of information for department heads. In determining what constitutes a capital item. And secondly. What the standards will be for making a judgment, uh, about a, a particular capital item. And where it would appear over a, a five-year capital plan. Uh, as you know, we've recruited an interim police chief who takes office on Wednesday. As John pointed out, uh, earlier, uh, we also had a meeting with the highway superintendent. And the architect designer of the highway garage. Even though I said fire station, uh, on my packet. Uh, and we took, took a look at. The design of the expansion for the highway garage, see where cost reductions could be implemented. Also took a look at whether or not, uh, a selectman would try to go to town meeting to get some additional funding. Lastly, uh, you've already made the appointment to the COA that was in my report. One more item. Senator Lesser has provided a citation from the Massachusetts Senate. Uh, to Chief Farnsworth. And we've been back and forth with his staff. Pam was doing that, some of that this afternoon. He would like to present that citation to our outgoing chief of police. We were thinking it would be done tonight, but actually it's going to be done next meeting, which would be the nineteenth Tuesday because of the Martin Luther King holiday. Uh, a few minutes, uh, it would take to do that. And he'd like to do it publicly. So. Will be aware. And that is the report.
Okay. Anything else?
One more, one more thing. I did not get in to sign the contract for the police chief. Did you get two signatures? Because we weren't, we weren't mobile. So I don't know if, um.
I don't have any.
Huh?
There were no signatures.
Yeah, that's what I assumed because we had, we were confined. So.
I got it from Don. It was, it was, uh, it was, uh, scanned and sent to me in an email late this afternoon. So we have.
Oh, I could do that. Do you want, is that okay to do? Scan it?
I can send it to you.
Okay.
I could send it to the other two members. You have to do it one at a time.
Okay.
I believe, I believe I can stop, I can stop and sign tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't think you're on it, John.
Oh.
Yeah.
Why isn't he on it?
I don't know. It was a photocopy.
What I, I did had John on it.
Ran out of paper. Uh, one other thing on the schedule I didn't see in the email that was sent out. So next week on the nineteenth, we are reviewing the police budget.
Okay.
Yeah. And then it's twenty-fifth building and highway, COA and fire on the first. So we do have a schedule already set up.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, hopefully, yeah, hopefully the town reports are.
Police budget came in again late this afternoon. I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay. Hey, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Talk to you later.
Be well.
Be well is right.